Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing or remain in silence from the sick, handicapped, departed, and the military personnel of this community. Thank you very much.
Here.
Bruce Garucci.
Here.
Bill Henderson.
Here.
Bill Lyman.
Here.
Joe Costello.
Here.
Joe Burdichi.
Here.
Bert Cherry.
Here.
Bill Anderson.
Here.
Engineer Sykes.
Here.
Sergeant Gary James.
Here.
He's here.
Sergeant Chief Sult Chilio.
There.
Alfred G. Ruffey.
Thank you very much. We'll call our first visitor up, Joel Lucas.
For weeks ago, my car was hit in front of my house, almost demolished. This is like the third time. Traffic comes up way too fast up my street. It needs to be 50 miles an hour. I know it's not the law, I understand that.
Could you state which street it is?
That's Bridge Road. This is the third time a vehicle has been hit in front of my house. Two substantial in one month. The road is not as wide there, so the problem is the cars stick out of the road a little bit further than the normal parking space should. I have no off-street parking options, I can't park anywhere else, so that's where I'm at. I have three cars in front of my house, and one of them is my vehicle, and two other little cars. The car that hit my car was a hit-and-run. No one knew who it was, no one saw what it was, it just hit the car from the left. So this is getting old, I'm just saying. The speed limit sign says 25, but it says 15 miles an hour whenever you go with the speed bumps. Why don't you just make it 15 miles an hour all the way through the road? Because it's 15 miles an hour as you come up the road there. You come up Bridge off of McLaughlin. Up the hill it says 15 miles an hour. That should continue all the way through, because the road can't handle the traffic. The traffic's going to come down regardless, it is what it is. But the speed limit needs to be slower, so people can realize that there's cars parked on the road, and also...
I'm not sure I understand.
There was another restaurant, a resident wanted to come, but he didn't show tonight. His name's Jay Domenico. His concerns are the same, if someone hit one of his mirrors on his car, and it's just getting old. I mean...
Bill, can we talk to Chief and see what he has to look at that and see what he wants to do?
If you could put like a car up there if it wants to laugh, just whatever, and if you could just leave a car up there, what, like a dummy in it maybe?
See it in other communities, right?
You know, have it parked there in that empty lot there, and have it faced out toward the road, and you know, and then that one day, you know, maybe you have a real officer in the car, and they can figure out what's going on. I mean, it's not just the residents going up and down that street, it is the residents going to the Better's Farm Housing Project, or Housing Development up there, and it's other cars coming from other directions. So, I mean, can't stop what's already gone through, but we can change it maybe. The speed limit's too high for that road. I mean, it's .5, I know it's the state law, but it's kind of confusing. You have 15, 25, 15, 15, 25. So it says speed bumps, 15 miles an hour.
Okay. Thanks Joel.
Basically it's...
Take a look at it.
By the way, congratulations on the election, this COVID, all the other new members. That's all I got to say.
Thanks Joel. Counsel, would you like to recognize Bob Rock?
Yeah, thanks. Hi. I had this one to say, something similar to Joel mentioned. Congratulations on the new electees, the council on, et cetera, et cetera. But I just wanted to mention that the last year, last couple of years, I feel has been really, some great things have been happening in Bridgeville. Those are the first time in a long time, you guys addressed the traffic congestion problem, you got together with the other communities and did the seven lane bridge and the other modifications, and again, once again, I hope you continue with that. And I just want to mention that years ago, Bridgeville Business District collapsed, and the tax revenue generation became less, it threw very burden on the residents, and by reviving or recreating our business district, that all changed. Our business district residence location has great potential to generate great tax revenue for the community, and I hope you guys continue on that, and I'll help if I can.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Counsel, would you like to recognize Jonathan Domenico and Johnny Miller?
Hi, we just wanted to, we're, I'm Jonathan, we have to go here.
Okay.
Thanks, gentlemen. Jonathan, Johnny, just wanted to stop in and say hi, introduce ourselves, congratulations to all the new electees and the re-electees. We plan at the church here in Bridgeville, beloved, and we're meeting right down in town here, and we just wanted to make ourselves available to the community, any needs that might be needed, or any resources that you guys need, manpower or assistance with, we just wanted to make ourselves available.
Where are you at church at?
So we're actually, we're meeting at the Methodist Church. And they were kind enough to let us come and...
We got Mary, Mary plays electric guitar and all some of that.
Oh yeah.
Are you like pastor or?
I guess you could call it that, yeah. But yeah, I mean, so we plan to continue to have, you know, Jonathan or I or some other people come, and our desire is to partner with the community and to try to do things that might benefit, so yeah, hopefully we'll continue to get to know everybody and be a resource.
Well, welcome to Bridgeville, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Let's hold it. The visitors? We'll go on to the minutes, motion to Borough Council regarding the minutes of October 9, we've got 17 regular minutes submitted.
So moved, second.
Bruce Garucci, Bert Cherry, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Conditional use application, 621 Block 1 on the road. Conditional use application was submitted by 714 Ventures Incorporated for the property located at 621 Block 1 on the road. This property is located in a mixed-use district. The applicant proposes to utilize the property for auto repair and the powder toting of vehicles and vehicle parts. This use falls under the category of vehicle repair garage, which is an additional use subject to 903.41 of the zoning ordinance. variance has been obtained by the applicant for the minimum lot width. A comment letter has been submitted by Engineer Sykes noting that all requirements in 903.41 have been addressed. The planning commission has recommended the consideration of the application by council. Public hearing was held on November 13 at 2017 at 6:30 PM to receive public comments.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Your second?
I'll say it.
All right. Bruce Garucci and Bill Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Welcome to Bridgeville.
Yes.
Proposed ordinance number 997, motion to Borough Council regarding ordinance number 997, an ordinance renaming the public street known as Locust Alley to Eagle Way. Ordinance has been duly advertised.
So moved.
Who's that? Joe Burdichi.
Second.
And Bill Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Current estimate number two and final, 2017 pavement maintenance program. Motion to Borough Council regarding the remiddle of current estimate number two and final 2017 pavement maintenance program to Jump Club Paying Incorporated in the amount of $18,320.29 for work completed to date. Estimate has been reviewed and approved by Engineer Sykes.
So moved.
Bruce Garucci.
Second.
And Joe Costello, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Current estimate number one and final, 2015 pavement maintenance program contract fee. Motion of the Borough Council regarding the remiddle of current estimate number one and final 2015 pavement maintenance program contract fee to T.A. Robinson in the amount of $202,594.07 for work completed to date. The estimate has been reviewed and approved by Engineer Sykes.
So...
Bruce, Garucci.
Second.
And Bill Henderson, and comment from Mayor Alzio?
This $202,000, and we are, I believe, going to get approximately $30,000 back from Equitable Gas, or People's Gas, because they replaced the gas line before we paid, which was very efficient. It still leaves us at approximately $172,000. Now, I have real questions of why this borough is paying $172,000. I believe that Gateway Engineers should be paying $172,000, and not this borough. I don't think council has a choice, by the way. You know, T.A. Robinson did the work, you have a contract, you've got to pay them, you all need to vote to pay them. So please don't, don't, don't take this as a request for you to vote, because paying them, because it's not, you don't have a choice. As oftentimes the case as elected officials, you really don't have much say-so. At least not at this moment. But you do have say-so about who oversees and who does this work, and who looks at this work. And Gateway Engineers' history with Bower Hill Road is not good. In 2013, Gateway Engineers prepared the specifications, supervised and inspected the repairs, gave you the same request to make payment, the council, payment was made, and not a year later, the road failed in 2014. In 2015, Gateway Engineers prepared specifications and bids were received for daylight work at $68,738. That's the contract that this work is being performed under, as I understand it. A contract from July of 2015 that was supposed to be completed by September of 2015. Now, I understand that there were delays for logical reasons, one of which was to allow the gas company to replace the gas line, that made sense. What didn't make sense is that we've gone from $68,735, actually, it was awarded at $72,738, because it was supposed to be done at 9. So instead, we're at approximately $172,000 after the gas company reimburses us for work that should have been done properly in 2013. Now, Gateway Engineers has been the party that has looked at it, inspected it, and frankly, I think they should bear the cost of $172,000. And if not, we should look as a borough at replacing Gateway Engineers, because it doesn't do us any good to pay a lot of money to have this kind of work if they're not going to stand behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, here's the motion on the floor.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Calendar year 2018 budget workshop advertisement, motion to Borough Council approving the advertisement of the budget workshop meeting to be held on Tuesday, November 20th, 2017 at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Joe Burdichi and Bruce Garucci, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Calendar year 2018 proposed budget advertisement, motion to Borough Council approving the advertisement of the calendar year 2018 proposed budget to be available for public inspection on Monday, November 27, 2017. This advertisement will meet and exceed the 10 days public review requirement per Borough Code.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bruce and Bert Cherry, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Bill List, motion to Borough Council regarding the November 2017 bill list.
So moved, second.
Joe Burdichi and Bruce Garucci, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Payrolls, motion to Borough Council approving the payrolls of November 17, 24, December 1, and 8, 2017.
So moved.
Bruce Garucci.
Second.
And Joe Costello, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion, monthly reports, motion to accept and pay any commissions due October 2017 real estate tax collector report.
I'll move.
Joe Burdichi.
Second.
And Bert Cherry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to accept the September 2017 financial report.
I'll move.
Joe Burdichi.
Second.
And Bruce Garucci, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the October 2017 police report.
So moved, second.
Bill Henderson and Bert Cherry, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And motion to accept the October 2017 zoning report.
So moved, second.
Bill Henderson and Joe Costello, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Payment reports, administration.
I don't have any reports, sir.
All right. Finances, Joe Burdichi.
As Laurie mentioned, we're going to have our budget workshop meeting on November 21st. We're doing a lot of conversations in regards to trying to come up with those numbers. Laurie's getting a lot of the different bids and anticipated expenses for 2018, and as we discussed last year, it's going to be a very interesting year coming up, and as anticipated, it's going to be another very interesting year coming up here in 2018.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Parks and Parks.
Just real quick, the parks are still open, but the water has been shut off down in all the parks as far as the restrooms go, so travel, you're on risk. Parks are still open, expect with chart tears till the weather turns bad.
Joe, can I add something? I'd like to just tell the public what happened down at Sharker's Park, what was it, two, three weeks ago? For no reason at all, somebody came down to the park and took out all the guts out of a scoreboard that was purchased from the, for the BAA. This what happened right after the floods, and we raised a lot of money to get those scoreboards. And somebody just came in, bent the whole thing, put dents all over, took all the guts, every little electronic thing that's 10 years old, I don't even know what owner if they were needed for, because it's past technology.
No cameras down there?
No. Well, we're addressing that in this conversation.
This is the second time.
Well, they, it's ridiculous, there's no reason to tear apart that scoreboard. The BAA is in the process of finding out, and obviously, thank goodness, we have insurance, but it's just unacceptable. There's no reason to do that, because those scoreboards throw a lot of money, and the kids love to have that stuff available to them. We're not going to be able to, people go down there for no reason at all and just destroy it. And Bill was down there personally, and he unfortunately had to call and tell me the bad news. It's just very disappointing, and hopefully we can address that with some cameras and different things that we're planning on doing.
Thank you, Bill. Public works.
All's I have, sir, is just remind the public that the leaf pickup will run through the first week of December, weather permitting, and our brush drive program will run through the whole month of November, so if you got these, push them up to the curb, our guys will pick them up, and tree branches, sections of tree, or whatever, it'll be along, if you put along the curb, our guys will pick it up and grind it, so that's it.
If you got Eagle Way with the pile of sticks for you. You're going to find out where Eagle Way is now, though.
That's all I have.
We should contact the 911 system to let them know that change is going on.
What's that, sir?
I was just asking what the date was for the pickup on leaves and stuff. It goes through the whole month of December, or through the first week of December for the leaf pickup.
It follows the streets and the rest.
Public safety, Bill Henderson.
Yeah, a couple of things, like, first of all, last month you threw something to our committee with the Laurel Street issue, and we met to discuss and I talked with the chief, and, you know, what it boils down to for me is, from the naked eye, there's an issue there. It looks like something jets out into the street. Now, we don't know where the street begins and where it ends, and that's something that I think that we're going to answer that question logically in black and white, we've got to find that out. So I don't think it's a public safety issue, I think it belongs, whether it's a zoning issue or back in the administration side, I just wanted to let you know we took a look at it, and don't feel that it's a public safety issue, but it does look like there's a problem down there. So, we could take a look at that, Laurie, and I'm sure how we go about finding, you know, the answer to that question, but...
We'll figure something out.
Okay. And then, last thing, you know, this is getting to be a monthly habit, but, you know, the use of social media once again has played a significant role in capturing someone who's done something wrong in our town, so I commend the police department for their continued use of the social media, and look forward to reading the next story that gets put out there, so, thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Bill. Mayor Alzio.
Well, I would like to say how, what an honor it has been to serve with all of you, and I appreciate that, I appreciate the community. Also wanted to touch on Mr. Lucas's comments about Bridge. We can have police officers try and slow traffic down more, but if you really want to make that into a neighborhood place, I think expanding Cook School Park might be a firm solution. Now, there are some plans out there that we've discussed over the past two or three years. I think it would really benefit the community, the park would be a better park, the traffic flow would be better, it would not be through traffic, it would not disable the cut-through. We are, there would be disadvantages, possibly to some of the residents on Passaventa. I have mentioned before that perhaps we should look to try it, you know, for a period of time. I realize that traffic studies may be in order and a great deal of expense, and one of my suggestions was perhaps just trying it and seeing what would happen if we closed down Cook School Road in front of Cook School Park. So, it's a thought, it might be a more effective solution to ending the cut-through traffic that is causing such a disservice to our residents. So, I want to think about that. Look forward to seeing everyone at Light Up Night. That's pretty much it. Light Up Night is December 1, I believe. Laurie?
December 1.
December 1.
Six days.
Six days.
Sergeant James, you have anything?
I do not.
Sorry. Thank you for coming, by the way. Go ahead. Slister McCarron, please.
Do you have my reading report, Dr. Sykes? Thank you, Mr. Brennan, you have my, my report. I'd like to point out a couple of things about Bower Hill Road. Yes, we did take bids in July 2015 for the repairs to the road that were to take place in 2015, but it was discovered that there was some delay, there were some issues, there were some requests to do visual investigation, council approved the geotechnical investigation that delayed work on the road. I believe there was possibly six boreholes drilled along there to try to find the source of water, if there was any water. There was, at the time of the winter of 2013 into 14, there was water creeping out of the shale along Bower Hill Road, which I think was the cause of some of the damages. When we did the work in 2013, we proved all Bower Hill Road, the entire length, with a loaded truck, approximately 30 tons, and did not find any deflection or deformation in the subbase of the road. The road was milled and resurfaced, and binder and glaring service was placed on it. Proof rolling it to find base repairs was an abnormal practice, and it's an industry practice that's used to find where base repairs need to be located. It's unfortunate that water did percolate into the ground, we didn't find any problems in the geotechnical report, it was either were extensive, the recommendation in the geotechnical report was to install underdrain along the high side of Bower Hill Road to capture any water, so it wouldn't get underneath the subbase of the road. In 2015, we were approached, myself and Tom Robinson were out there one day, marking up the site, getting ready to perform the work, and about halfway up the road, we smelled a very strong odor of natural gas. And at that time, I think felt I had a responsibility to notify People's Gas, who came out and identified the gas line that was leaking that approached 100 years old in age, okay? That was, I think that was approximately July, okay? They, when they said they had to look into it and complete the work, they were delayed by approximately two months in getting their work started on Bower Hill Road. Yes, they didn't work at night, it didn't have a lot of inconvenience to the residents and the traffic of Bridgeville Borough on Bower Hill Road, but when they completed their work, they were well into October approaching November, I believe. So, the decision was made at that time to delay the work until 2017. So, you know, I realized that, you know, we were at the, under the schedule of our contract to reform the work, he did not perform it until the first week of October, but in the process between the time the gas company did their work and the work was completed, we identified that there was additional base repairs that needed to be completed, the gas company decided to pitch in and pay for half of the wear-in surface. We made the decision, I think I came to Laurie and asked her to, about what thoughts were to increase the quantity and do the wear-in surface, and, you know, one thing I will say is back in June of 2016, we had a change order that was approved by council that increased the quantities on the contract. And let me add this, you had, any contract the Gateway Engineers prepares, puts out to bid for road programs work, is a unit price contract that has language in it that states that we reserve the right to add and delete the quantities at the unit prices, so we don't have to go back to the contractor and negotiate another price for the completion of the work. So, I think, you know, you know, T.A. Robinson did a wonderful job getting the work done in one week. I will, I will acknowledge that maybe they didn't keep the work hours, weren't off the road by 5 o'clock some days, but there were some challenges some days that they had to overcome, and they stayed with the job. You know, it was Tom Robinson's comment to me was, I want to get this job done in one week, he didn't want to drag it out. Dragging it out may have cost more than a total of $202,000. So, you know, we have a project that's completed, we're doing everything that we can from an engineering standpoint, using the best engineering practices that are out there and best construction methods that are available to us, so, okay?
Thank you, Bill, thank you.
T.A. Robinson helped with the original quantity bid price.
Yes.
That was three years old by the time.
Almost, yes.
That they did it, so, he was spared us in that round too, that to hold the price back to what it was instead of raising the price, or if we were to have to rebid it, then it would have been a whole nother process, so, it just, that was also part of the overall reasons why it ended up the way it did. part of the overall reasons why it ended up the way it did. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you.
That's all.
My comments earlier were not regarding TA Robinson. Comments earlier and the, and now regarding Gateway Engineers. Shale Hillside existed in 2013, 2014, 2015. The water has not changed. If there should have been an underdrain, there should have been a suggestion for an underdrain when it was done the first time. The gas line has been leaking for several years. Please continue to report it. It was 100, approximately 100 years old in 2014, just like it's approximately 100 years old in 2017. My comments are not disparaging about the delays. Well, I'm just using Joe Seitz's comments about the gas line's age. I don't know exactly how old it is. Okay? I don't know how old it is. I do know that it has been leaking and that the leaks will report it, and I'm very, extremely happy. It is one of the things that I'm happiest about in this borough, is that over the past years, we have taken an initiative to replace utility lines prior to paving the road. I know it seems logical, but it was not always done. It's not always done. So I'm very happy with that effort. And I'm not critiquing the fact that it was delayed for that. Okay?
Okay.
My, my other question is, Joe, you mentioned that there was a change order in 2016 as to the quantities?
Yeah, June 13th, uh, 2016, there was a change order for increasing quantities. So covered with the gas company.
Okay. And that was for the gas?
That was the cover of the gas, the part the gas company did.
The part the gas company did.
Correct.
Okay, well, again.
And then we added to it to fix the road properly this time. This time, as we were tearing everything apart, not, if paving the other side of the road means that, the time had passed, um, the road on the other side was starting to show the wear. So while we were in there, we wanted to make it all done in, in one time and be over with.
A logical question on that is, why we didn't redo the entire road base as opposed to doing just sectional pieces of it? You know, we did so many pieces of that checker, that it looked like a checkerboard. It might have been more efficient, you know, or more effective to do the entire work. I don't know, but that comes to the, you know, the question of perhaps re-looking at what caused the road to fail, because I still to this moment, even with the geotechnical analysis, don't think the gateway is certain as to what caused the road to fail, and if they've solved the problem yet. One final item. As far as the time, I appreciated that it was done in one week. It was a quantity price job, so it was in the contractor's best interest to accomplish it in one week. Okay? They stretched and caused difficulties by running over timelines. And I think that the borough, you know, the, the residents had to deal with that from the traffic standpoint, which showed, which added to the difficulty. Right? Uh, that's it on that. If you, there's another issue that I wanted to bring up that I forgot on my, but one of the people that I was rather honored to serve with was Billy Calusi. And Billy Calusi talked about one thing for many, many meetings, and that was cleaning out the crick. After decades of being told we couldn't, Billy Calusi got us to find out that we could! And we did. And since the crick had been cleaned out, sediment removed, um, we have had, you know, McLaughlin Run in front of Baldwin Street has been working, has been flowing a little bit better. We don't seem to have the flooding problems. Now, again, I'm no, I'm no expert on flooding, but I would like to ask that we continue what Billy Calusi started, and make sure that our public works go into the crick and get, and remove the debris. There's a part of a wall that has fallen into the crick, there is debris in the crick. I, I would ask Mr. Calarducci?
I know.
That that continue.
Yep, it will.
Wonderful, thank you, Howard.
Alright. Fire chief, Ochoya.
Thanks, Mr. President. You have my report for October, which you seem kind of very busy. Uh, we, just to note two things, we were assisted on, we assisted Dormon on their fire on Piermont and Upper San Clara on their fire they had by the week ago, but we keep on going. Um, we do have the Mega Back tickets out there, still some left, so please get. It's a good, it's a good event, see, you know, we're getting good rapport off of it. So, just to let everybody know, good fundraiser, good Christmas present for somebody.
We have in here, at the office, and with.
Couple more.
There we go.
Four of them left. Here's a nice table.
Twenty bucks, that's all it is, $20. I mean, $25,000.
$500 if you didn't.
Yeah.
If you can't understand.
Alright. Thanks, Mr. President. You got one.
South Bridge, Dan Miller's on here. Historical society, actually.
Thank you very much. Before I tell you about tomorrow's program and the end of this month's program, I have to tell you, please, Pendot, Bridgeville Borough, listen, Germany, I am German, and when they do a road, doesn't matter if it's two lanes or eight, they go down 60 inches and they build that road. And at the end of the brick, finish of the whole thing, the contract is signed, if anything happens in five years, buddy, you come back and fix it at your expense. Wouldn't that be a nice way to run Pendot and Bridgeville and all of them?
Very expensive.
It, it was really frightening that we found that out very quickly in Germany. Aside from that, tomorrow night, we're going back to Bridgeville High School, starting with the year 1939, and that is the year that my oldest brother graduated from Bridgeville High School, and I wish he could be here to hear this tomorrow night. But anyway, God knows what we're going to do in December, uh, but the programs at the fire, the, uh, realizations have been extremely successful. So you're all invited to that. I tried to hand out the few of these that I had. The other thing, at the end of the month, the speaker came to us about a year ago and told us about the bank we're operating in Castle Shannon, I think it was 1915, 1917. Um, the criminals were all from Russia, they were not American citizens. Uh, there were two deaths, and two tellers in the bank were killed. This man, you had to laugh and you had to cry when he talked. He was excellent. So at the end of this month, he's gonna tell us about the ship Niagara in Lake Erie, and he's bringing, or he's going to direct some people to be, uh, part of the, you know, what do you call it? Helpers, workers on that boat. But come to the Fire Hall, because that one is really a great program. And that's about it for now. I wish to thank everyone, say congratulations to those who won, thank everyone for their work, and please, come to one of these, they're fantastically interesting. Back last month, they learned more history than they ever wanted to. And that's hard to say. But I want to give.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Bridgeville Library, I'll bet you with me.
Thank you so much this evening. Um, I wanted to just, um, um, talk a little bit about the library. I have shared with the borough council, um, copies of, uh, financial reports, kind of overview of how we're doing at the library, where our funding sources are from, um, the per capita's for communities based on the state, um, library code. And, um, today is a very important day, because 55 years ago today, after much planning and solicitation of funds and materials for the citizens and local businesses, the Bridgeville Public Library opened its doors on November 13th, 1962. Today, the library is still a vibrant part of the Bridgeville community, and the data shows that persons of all ages are not only using its books and materials, but also enjoying the current library space as a community center for social and educational needs. In the handout, which I apologize to the audience, um, it shows that the library is currently able to manage the expenses of operation. This is made possible due to the contract for management that we entered into with South Bridgeville Council Library, as well as taking advantage of other collaborations to reduce overall expenses of the library and careful stewardship of income from all sources. The library is now preparing for not only the typical increases in utilities and other operational expenses, but also for the significant financial challenges which will coincide with the mortgage coming due in 2020. These challenges could result in drastic cuts to the library services provided to our community. The Pennsylvania State Library Code states municipal funding of the local library is to be a minimum of $5 per capita. This funding goal could be met with an increase of just under $6,000 in added annual support. And an increase would allow the library to prepare for coming financial challenges and help to ensure continued access to this valuable, valued community resource. If council requires further information than is what is provided in the summary, the library is provided more detailed documents to the financial committee, and we will respond promptly to any other information requests not covered in those. Board and trustee meetings are held the third Tuesday of each month and are open to the public. We are proud to recognize the heritage of our library's place in the community, and with your support, our library will continue to serve the generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Uh, borough manager, Laurie.
Uh, I've provided my written report, um, just one correction on page 3. Um, the budget workshop meeting is not January 21st, 2018. I don't know what I'm, I don't know what I'm gonna be doing on that day. It's November 21st, 2017. So, if anyone has any questions.
Old business. New business.
You know I always have something, yeah? So, the Southwest Community Chamber of Commerce, I called and asked me today to announce, uh, that the annual holiday luncheon that's at Nevillewood is December 12th, from 11:30 to 1:30. Um, with Mandy Prior, this being her first year, she really wants to go all out on the event, so there's a lot of things that are coming, uh, including, uh, they're even raffling off a TV that they had a certain bank, uh, sponsor. Um, but they also have a, a very well-known, um, uh, I'm not sure if it's the whole group, but part of a group that's coming to the event that's, I can't announce yet, but supposedly it's gonna be very impressive and a very nice lunch that they're putting together. She has already sold, I think, over 100 tickets to the event, so, um, you need to act fast. I, I think that they're gonna be around 200, so, and it's already, it's only, it's still a month out, so, anybody that's interested in going?
You have to be a member?
No.
What's the date here, Joe?
Uh, December 12th.
I believe it's 35 for members and 45 for non-members, is the cost.
Thank you, Bill.
The other new business, I got something real quick, I know people have been saying all night, congratulations to the new winners, or the new elected authors, but, um, I definitely wanna say congratulations, um, we have some new faces coming on council, excited to work with them, some familiar faces coming back. Um, I wanna thank the people who ran, uh, put themselves out there. Uh, you, you open yourself up to public scrutiny, and it's difficult, and, um, you put yourself out there for public opinion, and, um, that's what makes this, you know, this government great. And finally, I wanna thank the people who, um, started looking, Neil, thank you for the last four years, been great knowing you, um, you know, definitely got on a meeting here. Um, Bert, I wanna thank you for coming in at a time where it was very difficult for his council, and we lost, uh, Bill Calusi stepping up and filling his shoes, uh, very honorably, made a lot of work for us. And Pat, thank you for the last four years, keeping me on my toes. And I guess you're not gonna be around now, so probably see you in. But thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you in the future. Yes. Uh, is there a motion?
Second, all those in favor?